Hey team, we'll start in thirty seconds. Good evening, happy Thursday everyone, happy Fourth of June. I'm calling this meeting to order at seven oh one PM. And I would start this meeting with a moment of silence for George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, and community members who we lost due to COVID nineteen. Thank you. The Chelsea Public School System is committed to standing in solidarity with our Black and Afro-Latino students and families, advancing difficult conversations about racism and advocating for systemic change in education. We want to ensure that our Black students and staff feel loved, heard, and valued by us, and that they know they are not alone. Their lives matter. We stand together against racism, and we stand together to support all of our students across the district. Thank you, and now, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can unmute yourself and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to three republics which is one nation, one God, indivisible,天地，and justice for all.
Thank you, please mute yourselves. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on April thirty. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Do I have a second?
Second that motion?
Awesome, thank you. I will now turn it over to Dr. Arbery to present retirees.
Alme, you're still on mute. Is that better? Okay, good evening everyone, I am honored to present the retirees and present all of our retirees for this year. And I'm going to start with our custodians, and I wanted to say a special thank you to our custodians for the work that they've done during this crisis. We could not have survived this crisis without the hard work of all of our custodians. And so I'm going to start with Anthony Covino. Anthony has been in Chelsea Public Schools for thirty-two years. He worked at Chelsea High School, Prattville School, and Burke's Complex. He was a senior building maintenance man and senior building custodian from June nineteen eighty-seven to July of twenty nineteen. And so, I have his citation here. And it says, whereas Anthony Covino has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over thirty years, and whereas Anthony has been a dedicated building maintenance man and senior building custodian since nineteen eighty-seven at Chelsea High School, Prattville School, and Mary C. Burke Complex. Whereas Anthony has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. And whereas Anthony has conducted his responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism, and whereas he has brought honor to himself, his family, and his colleagues through his contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea Public School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Anthony Covino on his contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of his retirement. Congratulations Anthony, and thank you. Our second retiree is Wilfredo Velez. He has worked in Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-five years and three months at the Williams Complex, and was the building maintenance man from five nineteen ninety-four through nine twenty nineteen. And so, we would just like to congratulate William Velez, and I'm... So, let me find his certificate here. Okay, so, hey, we have this. Whereas Wilfredo Velez has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-five years, and whereas Wilfredo has been a dedicated custodian since nineteen ninety-four at the Williams School, and whereas Wilfredo has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district, and whereas Wilfredo has conducted his responsibilities with dignity and professionalism, and whereas he has brought honor to himself, his family, his colleagues through contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Wilfredo Velez on his contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of his retirement. Congratulations, Wilfredo. Our next retiree is Felix Torres. He has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for twenty years and two months. He worked at Chelsea High School, and he was the building maintenance man from nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand and nineteen. So whereas Felix Torres has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for twenty years, and whereas Felix has been a dedicated building maintenance person since nineteen ninety-nine at the Chelsea High School, and whereas Felix has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district, and whereas Felix has conducted his responsibilities with dignity and professionalism, and whereas he has brought honor to himself, his family, and his colleagues through his contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Felix Torres on his contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of his retirement. Congratulations Felix. And our next retiree is Charles Galatas. And he worked in the Chelsea Public Schools for thirty years and eight months. He worked at the Shertlift School and the Williams Complex. He was the building maintenance man and senior building custodian. So whereas Charles Galatas has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for thirty years, and whereas Charles has been a dedicated building maintenance person since nineteen ninety-eight at the Early Learning Center and the Williams School, and whereas Charles has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district, and whereas Charles has conducted his responsibilities with dignity and professionalism, and whereas he has brought honor to himself, his family, and his colleagues through his contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Charles Galatas on his contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on the occasion of his retirement. So congratulations Charles. Our next area that we will recognize are our security guards. And again, want to say thank you to our security guards who have worked diligently during this time of crises, and we are so grateful for their service. And so that said, we have one security guard who will be retiring. His name is Israel Diaz-Vayas, and he worked in Chelsea Public Schools for sixteen years and one month. And he worked at Chelsea Community School from two thousand and three through two thousand and twenty. So whereas Israel Diaz-Vayas has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over fifteen years, whereas Israel has been a dedicated security guard since two thousand and three at the Chelsea Community Schools, and whereas Israel has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district, and whereas Israel has conducted his responsibilities with dignity and professionalism, whereas he has brought honor to himself, his family, his colleagues through the contribution and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Israel Diaz-Vayas on his contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on the occasion of his retirement. Congratulations Israel.
Congratulations Israel.
Good job!
So our next category is our cafeteria workers. And I want to thank our cafeteria workers for the work throughout the summer, throughout this crisis. They have worked tirelessly, day in and day out, to serve our families and our students, and we are incredibly grateful. And so I just wanted to take this time to say thank you to all of our cafeteria workers. So the first person that we have is Carmen Valentin. She worked for nineteen years and eleven months as a cafeteria worker at the Early Learning Center. And she worked from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand as a substitute cafeteria worker. And then, from two thousand to twenty nineteen as an assistant to... She was a cook and a baker. So I am for her, like... Okay, well whereas Carmen Valentin has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for nineteen years, and whereas Carmen has been a dedicated cafeteria worker since nineteen ninety-nine at the Early Learning Center, whereas she has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district, whereas she has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism, whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Carmen Valentin on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. We want to thank Carmen. Carmen, thank you so much for your hard work. Okay, the next retiree is Susan Kelly. Susan has been a cafeteria worker for twenty-one years and two months. She worked at the Mary C. Burke Complex and the Williams Complex. She was a substitute cafeteria worker from nineteen ninety-eight to nineteen ninety-nine, an assistant to the cook and baker from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and seven, senior to cook and baker from two thousand and seven to twenty nineteen, and a kitchen manager from June of twenty nineteen to November of twenty nineteen. So Susan Kelly, thank you so much for your years of service. And whereas Susan Kelly has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over twenty-one years, whereas Susan has been a dedicated cafeteria worker at the Mary C. Burke Complex and the Williams Complex, whereas she has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district, whereas Susan has conducted her responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism, and whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Susan Kelly on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations Susan. Okay, our next retiree is Anna Cheravam. And Anna has been with the Chelsea Public Schools for thirteen years. She worked at the Early Learning Center. She was a substitute cafeteria worker and an assistant to the cook and baker. So whereas Anna Cheravam has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over ten years, and whereas Anna has been a dedicated cafeteria worker since two thousand and six at the Early Learning Center, and whereas Anna has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district, and whereas Anna has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism, and whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Anna Cheravam on her contribution to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this occasion of her retirement. Congratulations Anna. So our next category is paraprofessional. And we have three paraprofessionals retiring. So our first one is Martha Dyer. She's twenty-eight years old, and, not twenty-eight years old. She worked for Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-eight years and nine months. She worked at the Williams South and the Early Learning Center. She was also a lunch monitor and a paraprofessional. Ms. Dyer also worked for the before-school program and after-school and summer programs. So whereas Martha Dyer has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over twenty-eight years, whereas Martha has been a dedicated lunch monitor and paraprofessional since nineteen ninety at the Williams School, the Early Learning Center, and also worked for the before-program, after-school program, and summer program. Whereas Martha has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. Whereas Martha has conducted her responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism, whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Martha Dyer on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations Martha. Our next paraprofessional is Isabel Pariante. And she has worked as a paraprofessional for thirteen years and six months at the Early Learning Center from two thousand and six through two thousand and twenty. So whereas Isabel Pariante has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over ten years, and whereas Isabel has been a dedicated paraprofessional since two thousand and six at the Early Learning Center, and whereas Isabel has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district, and whereas Isabel has conducted her responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism, whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedicated to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Isabel Pariante on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations Isabel. And our third retiree from our paraprofessionals is David Theron. He has worked for Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-seven years and two months. He worked at Chelsea High School and the Mary C. Burke Complex. He was a paraprofessional from nineteen ninety-three to nineteen ninety-six. He was a teacher from nineteen ninety-six to nineteen ninety-eight, and a paraprofessional from nineteen ninety-eight through two thousand and twenty. So whereas David Theron has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over twenty-five years, and David has been a dedicated paraprofessional and teacher since nineteen ninety-three at Chelsea High School and Mary C. Burke Complex. Whereas David has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district, and whereas David has conducted his responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism, and whereas he has brought honor to himself, his family, and his colleagues through his contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to David Theron on his contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of his retirement. Congratulations David. So our next category is our school health manager. And that is Marie Washington. Marie has worked in the Chelsea Public Schools for twenty years and four months. And her location was the Mary C. Burke Complex District-wide. She was a school nurse from nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand and fourteen, and then the school health manager from two thousand and fourteen through twelve twenty nineteen. So whereas Marie Washington has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for twenty years, and Marie has been a dedicated school nurse and school health manager since nineteen ninety-nine at the Mary C. Burke Complex District-wide, and whereas Marie has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district, and whereas Marie has conducted her responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism, and whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Marie Washington on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations Marie. Our next category are our teachers. And our first teacher is Elise Cooper. She worked for Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-six years. She worked at the Williams School and the Early Learning Center. She was a paraprofessional from nineteen ninety-three through nineteen ninety-five, and a teacher from nineteen ninety-five to twenty nineteen. Whereas Elise Cooper has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-six years. Elise has been a dedicated teacher since nineteen ninety-three at the Williams School and the Early Learning Center. She has also been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. Whereas Elise has conducted her professional responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism, whereas Elise has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her career and contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Elise Cooper on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations Elise. Our next teacher is Joan Piatti. She has worked in the Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-three years and three months. She worked at the Shertlift North and Early Learning Center. She was a teacher from nineteen ninety-six through nineteen ninety-three. Then she was a teacher from nineteen ninety-six to twenty nineteen, and she also worked as a mentor and a coach. So whereas Joan Piatti has been with the Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-three years, whereas Joan has been a dedicated teacher since nineteen eighty-six. Whereas Joan has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. Whereas she has conducted her responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism, and whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that Joan Piatti, that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Joan Piatti on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations Joan. Our next teacher is Lisa Chigurini. And she has been in Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-five years. She worked at Chelsea High School, and she worked from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and twenty as a teacher. Lisa also worked as the head volleyball coach, head softball coach, and teacher for summer school programs. Whereas Lisa Chigurini has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-five years. Lisa has been a dedicated teacher since nineteen ninety-five at the Chelsea High School, and also worked as the head volleyball coach and head softball coach and teacher for the summer program. Whereas Lisa has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. Whereas Lisa has conducted her responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism, and whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, her colleagues... And whereas she's brought honor to herself, her family, her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Lisa Chikorini on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations, Lisa. Okay. Our next category are our guidance counselor, uh, guidance counselor. So we have Aline Wallace. She works, has worked in Chelsea Public Schools for sixteen years. She worked at the Wright Middle School. And she's a guidance counselor from two thousand and three to twenty nineteen. So whereas Aline Wallace has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over fifteen years. Aline has been a dedicated guidance counselor since two thousand and three at the Wright Middle School. Whereas Aline has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. And whereas Aline has conducted her responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism. And whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedicated to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved with the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee then their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Aline Wallace on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations, Aline. Our next category is our coordinators. And we have one coordinator who is retiring, Michelle Sodergreen. Sodergreen, she has worked with us for twenty-five years. She worked at the Shertlift North, the Hook School, and has worked District Wide. She was a teacher from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and five. A literacy and humanities coordinator from two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty. And she also worked as a lead and a mentor. So whereas Michelle Sodergreen has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for twenty-five years. Whereas Michelle has been a dedicated teacher and coordinator since nineteen ninety-five at the Shertlift North, the Hooks and the District and District Wide. And also worked as a lead mentor. And whereas Michelle has been a positive role model throughout the district. Whereas Michelle has been, uh, conducted her responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism. And whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Michelle Sodergreen on her contributions to and career with the school department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations, Michelle. And our next retiree are our principal categories, and we have one principal. Um, Adele, Adele Labarski. She has worked in Chelsea Public Schools for forty-seven years and nine months. Um, she worked at the Williams South, the Sokolowski School, and the Hook School. She was a substitute teacher from nineteen seventy-two through nineteen seventy-three. She was a teacher from nineteen seventy-three through nineteen ninety-nine. She was an assistant principal from nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand and five. And principal from two thousand and five to two thousand and twenty. Um, Adele. Whereas Adele Labarski has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for over forty-five years. Whereas Adele has been a dedicated principal for Chelsea Public Schools since two thousand and five. And has served as a substitute teacher from nineteen seventy-two through nineteen seventy-three. A teacher from nineteen seventy-three through nineteen ninety-nine. An assistant principal from nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand at the Williams School. And a principal from two thousand and five through two thousand and twenty. Whereas Adele has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. And whereas Adele has conducted her responsibilities with dignity and professionalism. And whereas she's brought honor to herself, her family, and her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. And therefore, be it resolved with the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Adele Labarski on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea Public School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations, Adele. Okay, and, and this one, well, I might cry. Our su- our former superintendent. Um, Mary Burke uh, worked in Chelsea Public Schools for thirty-seven years and four months. She worked at the Mary C. Burke Complex, Kelly School, the Clark Avenue School, and Central Office. She was a substitute teacher from nineteen eighty-two through nineteen ninety-three. Uh, permanent substitute teacher from nineteen eighty-three through nineteen eighty-two. A teacher from nineteen ninety-two through nineteen ninety-eight. An assistant principal from nineteen ninety-eight through two thousand and two. A principal from two thousand and two to two thousand and four. An assistant superintendent from two thousand and four through two thou- two thousand and eight. A deputy superintendent from two thousand and eight through two thousand and eleven. And a superintendent from two thousand and eleven through January of twenty twenty. Whereas Mary M. Burke has been in the Chelsea Public Schools for thirty-seven years. And whereas Mary has been a dedicated superintendent for the Chelsea Public Schools since two thousand and eleven. And has served as a substitute teacher from nineteen eighty-two through nineteen eighty-three. A permanent substitute teacher from nineteen eighty-three through nineteen ninety-two. A teacher from nineteen ninety-two through nineteen ninety-eight. An assistant principal from nineteen ninety-eight through nineteen, two thousand and two. A principal from two thousand and two to two thousand and four. An assistant superintendent from two thousand and four through two thou- two thousand and eight. A deputy superintendent from two thousand and eight to two thou- two thousand and eleven. And a superintendent from two, the two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twenty at the Mary C. Burke Complex, the Clark Avenue School, and Central Office. And whereas Mary has been a positive role model for students and staff throughout the district. And whereas Mary has conducted her responsibilities as an educator with dignity and professionalism. And whereas she has brought honor to herself, her family, her colleagues through her contributions and dedication to the youth of Chelsea. Therefore, be it resolved that the superintendent and the members of the Chelsea School Committee extend their sincerest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Mary M. Burke on her contributions to and career with the Chelsea School Department on this, the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations to all of our retirees. We're so fortunate to have had you work in the Chelsea Public Schools. And you always have family and friends in Chelsea. And we always welcome you back with open arms. And, um, please don't forget about us and, um, enjoy your retirement as well. And congratulations. Well. Okay, our next presentation is, as we shift gears, will be summer school. And I have our assistant superintendent, uh, Adam Delaney will present the, um, giving a short presentation on summer school. So Adam, take it away.
Okay, so first off, I'd like to thank everyone on the team. Uh, there was a lot of work that went into this. Um, and we have basically had to build everything from the ground up going into a, a year where our budget is certainly under question. So we're trying to rebuild, build as robust a system as we possibly can with limited funds. So we had to be really strategic. So I'm gonna start with a little overview. Um, so we had to really think about what kids need summer program most. And I think in this situation, um, I would say pretty much all of our students could benefit from some sort of um, remote summer programming. Um, but we had to be very strategic. So I will tell you right off the bat, we targeted our special education students, our English language learners, as well as our middle school students in general. So you'll see that as I go through. Um, the summer program will be remote, and it will be running from July sixth through July thirtieth. It'll be a Monday through Thursday program. Um, we've been able to fund one hundred two total staff to run all of our summer programming. Uh, overall, it'll be seventy-three classes, and class sizes will range from as low as five in certain classes to twenty-five, depending on the program. Depending upon student participation, we could have anywhere from nine hundred on the low end to over sixteen hundred students participating on the high end. And we're shooting for that high end, um, if we can get kids to engage. So we're really working hard on that right now as we speak. Um, so just to break down what sort of programs we're going to have, and you will see, see the asterisk, the single asterisk is, um, programs that are required by law that we actually ab- absolutely have to run. Um, and then the double asterisk are classes that are run, uh, funded through federal grants, which are at no cost to the district. So at the Early Learning Center, we have ten extended school year classes. So those are, uh, for special education students that, um, on their individualized education plans or I E Ps. Uh, they are required, uh, to be provided with extended school year. Uh, at the elementary level, we have nine of those classes, nine extended school year or E S Y classes. And we also have thirteen classes funded through our Title III one eighty-six grant um, for our English language learners. At the middle school level, um, we used to have Harvard Teaching Fellows coming in at both the middle school and high school level where they provided their own fellows at no cost to us. Um, due to the pandemic, they're not able to contribute that this year. We're hoping we can revisit that again next year. But for now, we had to decide whether or not to continue the program that they ran. So, um, strategically, we do want to invest in our middle school. So we decided to, uh, invest in summer intervention program. So we'll have six classes at the middle school, um, for overall intervention for students who are sort of falling behind. Um, we also have a new program that I, I believe strongly in. Uh, Dr. Abeta and, and Ms. Kent have, uh, been working with a pro- uh, program called The Calculus Project. Um, and what we're really trying to do with this program is catch kids early in middle school uh, so that we can really ramp up their mathematics learning. And the goal here is to get them ready to succeed in AP Calculus courses in high school. Uh, there's great research out there that basically says that if you can pass an AP Calculus course, you're far more likely to graduate from college. Um, and we want to be able to, uh, catch those kids early. We know that students who struggle in calculus don't struggle in calculus because of the calculus. They struggle in calculus because they don't know the algebra and the arithmetic. So if we can build that strong foundation, we'll increase the likelihood of those students uh, in the, in that program. And that program will carry the, through high school. So we're starting it this year, and we're really excited. Um, at the middle school level, we also have four classes for our English language learners and seven extended school year classes. At the high school level, the Chelsea Opportunity Academy, in true Chelsea Opportunity Academy fashion, will be doing things a little bit differently. Um, and they will have three classes running throughout the summer, including August. And they'll have, uh, a variety of teachers taking on a week, on a week-by-week basis to outreach with their students and provide all sorts of supports. Um, for students who have failed classes at the high school, this is where Harvard Teaching Fellows would contribute in the past. Um, but we do need to provide some credit recovery options. So, um, we're anticipating about thirteen classes or sections worth of credit recovery. Um, we also have an online platform called Odysseyware that allows students to catch up on their credits through an online platform. And, you know, we have a teacher and a school counselor overseeing that process. And we're expecting about two hundred students there. Uh, at the high school, we also have two extended school year classes, three English language learning classes. And we have two classes for, um, our eight-nine transition. That transition is so important, especially for some of our most challenged students. Uh, so we're really trying to reach out to some of those students so that their transition to high school goes more smoothly. Um, I'm sure people are wondering what remote summer learning will look like. So the expectations that we've laid out in our job descriptions. Um, so basically, what we want our teachers to be able to do is provide at least one daily synchronous learning experience. Synchronous is the buzzword now. And what that basically means is you're in person, you're live with your teacher. Um, uh, you're, you're learning just like you would be in, in real life. You see your teacher, you, she'll have the board behind her, all that kind of stuff. Um, also, we're expecting teachers to provide at least one daily asynchronous learning activity, which basically means it's not live and in person, most likely it's recorded. Uh, the most common version of this is a teacher recording an instructional lesson uh, that she uploads to the system and the students can view it. The, the downfall to the asynchronous lesson is that it's not live and interactive, and the student can't ask the teacher questions. But we have found that the asynchronous, asynchronous lessons are actually really valuable because students can utilize their expert learner skills. And if they sort of, um, days off for a second, they can always rewind it and have it be played again. They can go back to it and listen to it two or three times. And in many cases, they can slow it down or speed it up, or even skip over sections that they already know. So those asynchronous lessons are actually really helpful. And also, teachers will be providing at least one daily independent assignment, uh, and they'll be providing feedback. So we see those three working together, um, in, in a strategic way. And, and it can be done in lots of different ways. One way could be that the teacher provides that asynchronous lesson where students are, you know, getting an introduction to something. And then they do that activity. And then when they jump into the synchronous lesson, that's where they can ask the questions and talk to the teacher and get the support that they need. Uh, for our special education, uh, extended school year services, uh, those are also communicated via their individual remote learning plans. All special education students have received a remote learning plan um, for during the school year, and the ones to get E S Y also get it for the summer. Um, also, from some additional supports, for, these are for students that aren't actually in our summer program. These are available to all of our students. We do know during this time, um, we have students and families struggling with a, a vast number of issues. Um, and so we have invested in two school counselors beyond just the July thirtieth. Those would be throughout the summer, four social workers throughout the summer. And we've also, um, we're really proud of this. We have seven school nurses who have, um, committed to supporting the city needs, not just the school department, but our families across the city that have, uh, medical needs. So that will happen throughout the summer. And my last piece is, um, we're sort of excited about this one, and it doesn't have, we didn't do any work here. This has been, um, endorsed by the Department of Education, and it's something called Camp Kinda. So all of you families at home, I really recommend looking into this. It's actually started already. So Camp Kinda is a free virtual summer camp. And it's an experience designed to keep kids in K grades K through eight engaged, curious, and having fun. Even if you're stuck in, at home. So their slogan is, it's like summer camp, kinda. Um, and it really, if you get on that website, it's really easy to use. It's in English and Spanish. And, um, we recommend that families, especially the ones not participating in any of our summer programming, uh, check out Camp Kinda. I think you'll find that it's actually really fun and also educational and worthwhile. So with that, I would open it up to any questions. It looks like Jeanette.
I have, yes. Um, I just have a question with the technological piece.
I know I work for Capic and they have an after school program. So when I say in management meetings, I guess a lot of the parents have been asking the after school program staff for how on how to log on and if the school could come up with some kind of training, something. I know my husband has been on one-on-one with parents as well to try to help them to navigate this. I think we'll have a better outcome because if the students need help and the parents really don't understand it, they're not gonna really do the work. So is there something that the school department can put out? Steps by steps and maybe not just one person in the school department in charge of doing this training with the parents? You know, that several people in different areas could do it? Or even talking to the after school program staff of how they could help the school? You know, it's a community. We have to work together. We want our students to succeed. So, you know, I've been thinking about that for a while and, you know, just to make sure because we don't know how long we're going to be in this remote learning. And we just want to make sure that our students have the access and they understand and the parents as well.
So we are, we're in the process of hiring all of our people, but we do have our school administration over the past two weeks has started the outreach for a lot of these programs. I think, Jeanette, you bring up a great point. And especially the part that we're really struggling with is our early learning center students who haven't done online learning yet. So they're rising up to first grade and this is going to be the first time they've done it. So the, the staff at ELC has been doing parent outreach for the past couple of weeks, fielding lots of phone calls. We've also partnered with UMass. There's a UMass Translate, Translation Center that we have a little bit of a grant going on there to support us with those calls home. And that will continue over the summer as well. So we're hoping that from the time from now until the end of school year before the program starts, that we have everybody already set up. But during the year, we will have some support.
Adam, can I just join in a little bit? Also, on our Chelsea Public Schools website, there is, are many resources for parents, including Parents' Guide to Google Classroom and some other things that walk you through step by step, how to help your child get onto the platform and, and work with it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I have two follow-up questions. First, thank you for organizing that and providing a really simple and a very clear PowerPoint for us. Will students have their Chromebooks this summer?
Yeah, so we've done multiple distributions. We just finished one, what was it? Monica can tell me what, two weeks ago, I think? All the days are blurring a little bit with me. But as we do our outreach, that's one of the things that we're talking about is, do you have a device? If not, we'll make an arrangement. We actually are, our principals have been leading teams to do drop-offs even after our last distribution. They've been dropping off Chromebooks even as early as yesterday. We dropped one off with only a couple of weeks left. So as we do the outreach, that's one of the things that we are asking is, are you all set with devices? Are you all set with internet? And we have plenty of devices and hotspots if people don't have them. So we can get them to them.
Great, thank you. And so will we not be collecting Chromebooks at all this summer? Are we holding off on that process?
We have decided that it is probably best to not collect them for a variety of reasons. And I think first and foremost, if we took those devices back, that would take away an access point to learning for all of our students. So we do have, like, for example, the Camp Kinda option, without a device, you can't get on there. So we hope that by leaving the devices in the hands of the children, that, that provides more opportunity to reverse that pandemic slide, if you will.
And if I can chime in, we did think long and hard about that, Tara Garcia. And as a team, we felt it was important that our students have access throughout the summer to other opportunities, whether it be the Camp Kinda, the WGBH, whatever it is. So we, we felt very strong that it was an equity issue and that our students should keep their Chromebooks. And in the fall, we'll still continue to do remote learning, probably a hybrid as well when kids come back and then extending activities at home. So we, we, we felt it was really about equity and, and, and making sure that our kids, no matter what, had, had something at home that they could use and learn and grow.
Great, thank you. And my last question is, will students be provided school lunch this summer?
Yes, the school lunch program, World One, actually runs five days a week at the current five locations that we have right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Adam. All right, the next item on our agenda is public comments. Veronica, do we have any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. Moving right along, the next item on the agenda is the report of superintendent schools. And I believe that's Miss Kent.
Great evening, everyone. And I do have a report. But I would like to start off with addressing the issues that are, that we are experiencing in our country and actually in our, in our world, as they've had ripple effects across the world. And so I will start off with my letter to, to our community. Dear Chelsea School Community, it has been heartbreaking and difficult to see what is happening in our nation. Not only are we living through a historic pandemic, but we are also witnessing racism in our country at heightened levels. As I watch the news, I cannot help but think of the impact this has on our community, staff, and students. This is a great deal, there is a great deal of understandable anger and frustration and outrage across our country over the senseless death of George Floyd. Despite the acts of violence that we've witnessed, we have also seen many examples of people, regardless of race, background, or age, coming together to stand united, to support Black Americans. There are many more people trying to do the right thing, and that is a powerful message that gives me hope. We must use this opportunity to walk persistently towards justice and help be co-conspirators for racial equity. I believe that in times of crises, we must find the opportunities for self-reflection and a collective dialogue. How do we help our students process what they are seeing and hearing? What are the teachable opportunities to help our young people do better? And how do we prepare our students to lead in the future? As a community, we want to make space to talk with and listen to our students. Our leaders and school support teams are available for any staff or students who want to talk. In the Chelsea Public Schools, our core mission is, we welcome and educate all students and families. Our values are anchored in creating a sense of community where we embrace our individual differences. Our differences are what make us special and create the beautiful Chelsea community that we live in. May we continue to walk with renewed commitment to our core mission and values and prepare our students to be critical thinkers, to lead in a more socially just world. And as we move forward, we, as a, as a school system and as a Chelsea community, have been very strong throughout this pandemic. This pandemic has united Chelsea and is a backdrop for the, what we need to do in the middle of this crisis. We need to unite and come together. And as a school system, we will wrap around our young Black students and our young students of color and our youth. And we will help our youth to have a voice and we will hear them. So I just wanted to say and to our community that we stand firm, we are with you, we hear you, and we are here. So thank you very much. And my second part of my report has to do with the reopening of schools. I, I have put together a task force that is focusing on the reopening of schools because we know that when we come, our students come back to us in, in the fall, school will not look the same. School will be different. And we have to prepare for that. And at the crux of, as, as we are preparing, the biggest challenge that we have to overcome is safety. We have to ensure that our, our students are safe and we are taking every measure possible to ensure that our students and our staff are safety, are safe when they return. And so we will be working in the next coming months, starting from now and, and this summer, to ensure that when our students return to school, that they will be safe and that we will have systems in place. So as, 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 as we prepare, I have created a district-wide reentry task force. And there are four, it's divided into four areas. There's the government and policy and communication. There's operations and safety, instruction and remote learning, and then health and wellness. And we have broken about 20 people into those four groups. And those four groups are meeting as subcommittees and then we come together as a whole. Our, our goal is to be ready for the start of school and make sure that we have a seamless start of school and the new way that school will look for us in the fall. Additionally, when we receive guidance from the commissioner, and I have been told that we will receive guidance around mid-June, and when we receive guidance from the commissioner about what school will look like in the fall, we will have some systems and structures in place already that we can overlay with what the commissioner is asking and the requirements that they are setting before us. And so our goal is to be overly prepared so that way we are ready come day one of school. And I will continue to update you on this as well. And my last update is regarding budget. We still do not have a word from the state of when we will receive our, our local funds and what our local funds will be. We are standing firm on our budget, the level budget that we passed. And when we receive the numbers from the states on our local allocation, I will let you, our school committee members know. But at this time, I do not have an estimated time of when we will receive our numbers. Hopefully, it could, it, our hope was it would be mid-June, but I don't, I'm not hearing that. And it might be a little bit later, so we will just, we will just wait and see. And then I'll keep you, I will definitely keep you posted. So those are my updates for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Abeta. The next item on the agenda are committee reports. Or I believe I skipped one. Ms. Kent, are you answering for me today?
No, you're not. Only because due to the closure, our indicators of success are paused. I've given, last month, I gave all of the data that was new, so thank you though.
Awesome, thank you. All right, awesome. So the next item on the agenda are committee reports. Do I have a motion to accept?
Madam Chair, make a motion that we accept all the subcommittee meeting minutes and condemn, commend them to the report.
Thank you. Have a second?
Back in the motion.
Great. Moving right along to unfinished business. We don't have any. And so we are moving on to the new business. Consideration and action to adopt the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for 2020, 2021 for hourly positions and salaried positions. Explanation: Each year, the school committee reviews and approves the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for hourly positions, salaried positions, and athletic coaches. These are positions that are not subject to any bargaining agreement. In light of the anticipated state and local budget shortfall, no changes to hourly rate, salary ranges, or athletic coach stipends is proposed. All schedules have been updated to reflect the upcoming 2021 fiscal year. Do I have a motion to accept? I think, I believe the, sorry, I think this is a roll call. Ms. Sejas, can you confirm if we need a roll call or, or is this a motion?
We'll need a roll call.
A roll call, great.
Consideration and action to adopt the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for 2020, 2021 for hourly positions and salaried positions. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle? She here?
You heard it maybe?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Did you gain my vote? Yes.
Okay. Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Nine votes on the affirmative, the motion carries.
Nine in the affirmative, motion carries. Consideration and action to accept a private grant in the amount of $5,000 from Project Bread for the summer feeding program. Explanation: Project Bread is a nonprofit that is committed to ending hunger in Massachusetts amidst the COVID-19 pandemic. They are providing the Chelsea Public Schools with $5,000 to support the summer feeding program. The funds will be used to produce, to purchase supplies in support of the feeding program, such as temperature-controlled bags, tents, and other items. Master General laws, Chapter 71, Section 37A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Sejas, may we have, may we have a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to accept a private grant in the amount of $5,000 from Project Bread for the summer feeding, summer feeding program. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Nine votes on the affirmative, the motion carries.
Nine in the affirmative, motion carries. Consideration and action to authorize a prepayment of, of up to $1 million in special education out-of-district tuition fees to the SEAM Collaborative for fiscal year 2021. Explanation: Pursuant to state law, school districts are allowed to prepay special education tuition for the upcoming school year. A maximum of three months' tuition can be paid to a private school, but prepayment to a collaborative does not have limits. The district proposes to pay up to $1 million in prepayment to the SEAM Collaborative using fiscal year 2020 funds in order to reduce the potential impact on the fiscal 2021 budget. Can we have a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to authorize a prepayment of up to $1 million in special education out-of-district tuition fees to the SEAM Collaborative for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez? I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
It's nine votes on the affirmative, the motion carries.
Nine in the affirmative, motion carries. Consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of $259,000 to move funds from multiple schools and departments to special education and people personnel. to move funds from multiple schools and departments to special education and people personnel and technology services. Explanation: Funds are available from three schools, the Early Learning Center, Clark, and Chelsea High School, and three departments. Benefits payroll adjustments and insurance instruction and assessment and other educational programs from salary savings and operating accounts that will not be fully expended. The funds are being transferred to special education and people personnel for the purpose of or prepaying out-of-district tuition and to technology services for the purchase of software licenses and equipment in support of in-school and remote learning. Can we get a roll call, please?
Consideration and action to approve a budget transfer in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to move funds from multiple schools and departments to special education and people personnel and technology services. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlo? I think you're muted.
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Nine votes on the affirmative, the motion carries.
Nine in the affirmative, motion carries. Consideration and action to approve the school committee calendar for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Explanation: Every school year, the school committee calendar must be approved by subcommittee, followed by the whole Chelsea School Committee before the commencement of the meetings of the next school year. Can we get a roll call?
Consideration and action to approve the school committee calendar for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlo?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Nine votes on the affirmative, the motion carries.
Nine in the affirmative, motion carries. Next item on the agenda will be read by Mr. Jimenez.
So uh this will be the first uh the reading of a resolution in support of federal action condemning police brutality and the use of excessive and militarized force throughout the country. Um uh House Resolution, uh no number yet. Whereas, recent news stories detailing the murders of unarmed people of color have not only taken a physical toll on our community, but have further deepened the generations of emotional trauma that many of our students carry around with them every day. And whereas, the murders of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd have sparked outrage and protests across the country, raising once again demands of accountability, equity, and respect from our system of law enforcement. And whereas, black people, including school-aged black boys and girls, Native Americans and Latinos, are killed by police at disproportionately higher rates than their white peers. And whereas, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, Massachusetts Seventh Congressional District, has introduced a resolution addressing disparities in our police system titled condemning all acts of police brutality, racial profiling, and the use of excessive and militarized force throughout the country. And whereas, the resolution educates the public on the long history of police brutality in the United States and the effects of the militarization of our police forces on communities of color. And whereas, as public servants, it is incumbent upon the school committee to stand for the safety of our hundreds of black and Latino students who are often criminalized simply because of how they look or speak, and to ensure our students understand the importance we put on their lives. And whereas, so many of the victims of police brutality remain in the public consciousness and that their memory serves as a call to action to elected leaders and members of the public alike to hold themselves accountable to resilient, yet underrepresented communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Chelsea School Committee offers its support for Congresswoman Pressley's resolution against police brutality, racial profiling, and the militarization of our police force. And be it further resolved that the Chelsea School Committee affirms its moral obligation to protect the civil rights of the most marginalized people and the students of Chelsea, especially our black residents, but including other people of color, LGBTQ plus individuals, people experiencing homelessness, people with disabilities, and others who have historically suffered from institutional and systemic inequities that excessively criminalize them. And be it further resolved that the Chelsea School Committee supports our district in promoting conversations between all members of our community so that we can use this opportunity to walk persistently towards justice and racial equity, helping our students understand the content and context of these demonstrations and how it relates to their lived experience as part of our country's history, past, present, and future.
I have a motion to bring this to a second reading. There's some wording in there I'm not happy with to sign on to this. Because um I'll go along with anything that's going to be a safety issue to the children in the community of Chelsea. But at this time, there's some wording in there, they're really harsh, and I'd like to uh bring it to a second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Kent, and thank you, Mr. Jimenez, for reading the resolution. Dear um to the school committee members, we um should send any feedback or edits to Mr. Jimenez via email. Um and then we, he will bring it to the next meeting for a second reading. And then, once we have a second draft, we can vote on the resolution. And so we won't be taking any voting today or any votes today. We are simply reading the resolution. And then, once again, we can provide any feedback or comments that we have to Mr. Jimenez via email. And we will then add the second draft to the next meeting's agenda.
Madam Chair, Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
May I have the floor?
Go ahead.
So um is it, is it correct that asking for a second reading does not require a draft of the current, current resolution?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
That the requiring a second reading does not require an actual draft to the current resolution before us, is that correct?
So the second reading should include the edits and the feed, well, not edits, but the feedback that the school committee members um suggest to Mr. Jimenez. And so the second reading will be the second draft of this resolution.
So um because, uh sorry, uh may I have the floor?
Go ahead.
Just uh since we are not going to be um needing to discuss this, um I just want to make sure that by by sending feedback on this resolution, we're not violating open meeting law. Um and so I'm I'm just, I'm just making sure that, you know, wh- what is the actual, like, is is the process that we will send feedback over email? How are we making sure that that, you know, that discussion is is happening in public?
Yeah, so you will be, so each member who is willing or wants to edit or provide feedback will email you and Ms. Sejas. And I don't, and I don't believe that's in any violation of open meeting laws, but Dr. Abada can correct me.
Um Ms. Ma- Madam Chairwoman, I would actually make a motion to adopt by roll call today.
I don't believe we're ready for that, which is why we are doing a second reading.
Are you speaking on this right now like you're chairing? Like, if I make a motion on the floor, I want to know by Ms. Sejas if I can make that motion for roll call or for discussion.
So, once again, today, we are only doing the first reading. Making a vote on this is not on the agenda, therefore, we will not be making a vote on this resolution.
But that, that's a violation of our rules, Madam Chair. A second reading is not required when presenting a resolution. I just want to be clear. We're okay with that. We actually appreciate the opportunity to bring these matters to light. There are nine members of this body. And all of us have an opinion and therefore why you bring it to the, to the meeting.
So, none of us were given an opportunity to provide edits to this resolution because Mr. Jimenez uh sent this in late and we approved of this late submission.
This resolution, I'm so sorry, Madam Chair, but this resolution was presented way in advance of the forty-eight hours per required for our school committee meetings.
That is incorrect, Ms. Santiago.
It's okay. I'm not, I I'm, I'm glad that the community is able to have conversations with various school committee members of this board. And those conversations will continue. I just want to make sure that as a body, we're informed of the rules of procedures and that we're not just take, you know, drafting it by, by saying that this language needs to be edited. Um in fact, we haven't even taken a vote on it, so um that's what I'm trying to address, draft like that contrast and separation between the two. If folks need more time to review it, then I understand that. But forty-eight hours with all the enclosures and attachments, we would hope that all school committee members review the attachments and come prepared to our school meetings, because that's the responsibility that I take to come prepared for discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Ms. Santiago. Um as I said, on the agenda for today's meeting, it was only the first reading. Thank you. Uh Ms. Sejas, I, I seem to have missed the personnel and enrollment report from earlier, and so we can, if we can go back to the agenda item. Thank you. And Dr. Abada, will you share with us the personnel and enrollment report?
Normally, what am I? Dr. Bitter, you're on mute. I would, normally, I do commend the rep- uh personnel report, so I like to commend the personnel report for the record. It's enclosure B, and I would like to commend the enrollment report for the record as well.
Thank you. Alrighty, team. The last item on the agenda are communications. Dr. Abada or members of the central office, do we have any, any other communications to comment to the report?
At this time, I have not received any communications.
Thank you. Any other announcements or comments from the school committee members?
I have a comment.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Velez, go ahead.
Um Madam Chair, as Chairwoman of the Policies and Procedures Subcommittee, um I'm asking if we could hold, um one. To give the opportunity for those members um that would like to see some language change on the resolution to submit. Um we, it will be open meeting, we won't be violating any laws. Um because honestly, I did review it and I did two quick reads, but as I took a little bit more time to read, um there were a few things that I would change myself. Um so I would like to call uh Policy and Procedure Subcommittee um to discuss this further. I think um I just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity um to voice what they're feeling. We're all in high tensions right now. Um a lot of us, including you, Madam Chair, you've lost family this week, right before the meeting, I received bad news. Um so there's a lot going on, a lot to process, and I think if we're going to vote on something that's going to represent us as a group, we all want to feel good about what's coming out as a group and allowing everybody the opportunity um to give their comments and feedbacks. Um and that's all I, I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Velez, and I think that's a tremendous idea. We can work on scheduling a subcommittee uh meeting to review this resolution, um if uh members feel comfortable doing so. Mr. Jimenez, go ahead.
Yeah, um I just want to comment just generally on the things that have been going on um around the country. Um first thing I want to do is recognize the brave people of our city, of Chelsea, um and and people in the country who have gone out there to peacefully demonstrate and to stand for the fact that black lives matter, even if police departments across the country don't act like it sometimes. These demonstrations are a call to action for elected officials like ourselves to really eliminate systemic racism, and that's the reason why I introduced the resolution today. Um thi- this is, I I don't mean it as a conclusion of our work on this issue. Its purpose is really to start this conversation with a strong commitment to racial justice from the selected bodies, so I look forward to to having a discussion in subcommittee um about this. Um over the last few days, I've had calls with constituents who asked me, what are we going to do about this? Some have said that this resolution doesn't actually go far enough. Um so I just want to let those people know that I hear them. I want to work with them and with the rest of our community to identify concrete action steps that the school committee can take to protect our students and our constituents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Sun.
May I speak?
Yes.
Okay, um. This, this hits me really hard, this whole, this resolution. I mean, I, I, I understand what uh my colleague is putting together, I understand it. Uh there are some word verbiage that needs to be, verbiage needs to be adjusted for my, for my, for me to sign off on it. Um I've had the same situation that both uh Madam Garcia, as well as Madam Velez, has had in their family this week and last week, some family loss. Um I also uh have been at some of the marches here in the city uh of Boston, and I have family in Brockton who's been out there this week also. Um my concern is that the words that we use in this resolution, that we make sure that our police officers here in Chelsea, Massachusetts, realize and understand that our relationship with them, my personal relationship, and I believe everyone else's relationship with the police department here in Chelsea, does not reflect everyone else in the country. I want to make sure that that's what we're trying to convey to our police department. We have a wonderful relationship. We have a wonderful community of people of all race working together side by side. And when there's an issue here in our community, whatever the issue may be, whether it's the collaborative, or it's ROKA, or it's Chelsea Black Community Organization, or I've been a member of, the president of, over nine years, we get, we join together, side by side. And with your resolution, uh, Mr. Jimenez, I support the resolution being given. But the wording of the resolution, the way it's presented in word, that's the thing that's holding me back. So I think we need to go back, we need to rev- revamp some wording, the way, way things should be. And making sure that when we sign off on this, it does not reflect the relationship that Chelsea residents have, the Chelsea Police Department. That's what I want us to make sure to be thinking about. And um I don't know if we table this, or could we have tabled it, if you could have, it would, it would probably just be dead for a while. Well, we're giving you the opportunity, and others, the opportunity to come back next month and present something different. That's all, present something different. I've been on many boards in the city, planning board, zoning board. Um and we had to have people come back a couple of times for the whole board to approve it. So it's nothing that's like dead. So I just want to let, let everyone know that, put our thinking hats on. We are very emotional, whether it's personal, family issues, whether it's school, whether it's work. We're all emotional right now. So take our time to read this. Take us time to look at it four times, five times, whatever. Digest what we need to digest, remove, add, subtract, whatever you want to do. But let's work with this, on this the right way, in a respectful manner at all times. We're going to have disagreements, but we respect each other's statements and 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 let's work on this together as a group. A- as we always say, that this committee is a family. So let's work like a family, let's behave like a family, and let's get it done. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, thank you for your kind words. Um and I, I would also like to reiterate, it's not that I'm in disagreement with the resolution. Uh there's a process that we follow, and as many committee members have shared, they need time to process and provide feedback if they want, um if they want to vote on, on this resolution. And so we will work together as a team to make this document a document that we all feel comfortable with, because we are a collective and we work together as nine school committee members for the city of Chelsea. So we will continue to work together. Thank you all. If there are any more comments, please feel free to uh chime in now.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Santiago.
So I appreciate, Ms. Velez, uh your comments. I just want to make sure this is a resolution that's going before the school committee to be presented, uh to take a vote on whether we adopt a resolution or not. This isn't a change of policy. Um if the Chair, Ms. Chairwoman, if you want to call a subcommittee to talk about something specific, then I think you can do that. I think the process as it stands is when a resolution is presented, it can be, as, folks can ask for a second reading, folks can ask for it to be tabled, or there can be a vote. Um so I just want to make clear that So I just want to make clear that as we, some of us will have different opinions, and those are to be respected. And I appreciated the fact to keep in mind of the times that we're in. But this is why we do have a process in which these discussions are able to be held as a body, and this is a resolution. And so those guidelines are a little bit different than maybe what, there's a couple of different perceptions about what that process is. And maybe this is a question for, you know, our city attorney for clarity, or a refresher on Robert's rules. But having said all that, as the only member of this school committee that currently has a child in our public schools right now, I am super, super grateful for all the work that everybody has been doing throughout this pandemic. And in fact, I just wanted to close with saying that, you know, our superintendent has been doing, demonstrating great leadership. The cabinet has demonstrated great leadership. And this is as a body, as school committee members, we have an obligation to respond to the different concerns that we're hearing from community members. And I applaud Congressman, Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, and all the other municipal elected officials across the state of Massachusetts, who are taking a stance against decent systemic injustices that have gone on far too long. And so I'm very grateful, and I, I thank our black leadership here in the city that we've been in conversation with. And I also commend every single one of you for being willing to take a critical eye at this resolution that's certainly most needed in our times.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to table this, so we can talk more about it later on.
Thank you.
Table it.
Great. I will count that as a, a vote for tabling this resolution.
This is a public announcement. This is an announcement section. We need some order in these school committee meetings respectfully. I make a motion to adjourn? Is that what I'm doing now too, or?
That's not your, your.
So how can you accept her request? Forgive me, how can you accept? For a second reason, a second reading, and now you're just out of order, accepting someone speaking out of order? We're in an announcement section and about to adjourn because you approved that this go to a second reading. So what I'm saying is we need a little order, because it's not just one person that determines this whole process, so I would ask that we call it back to order.
I would like to second the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, once again, we're not adjourning the meeting just yet. We're almost done, so hang in there. Thank, thank you. Are there any other last comments from the school committee members?
I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the school staff for all they've been doing over the last couple of months, and the superintendent and her staff for all they've done for the community of Chelsea, because every time I talk to someone out there, they're recommending and telling how what a wonderful community we live in, and to thank the school staff for all they do. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Carlo. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Wonderful. Have a great night, everyone.
Good night.